I'd like to call the Planning, Zoning and Building Committee to order. Let the minutes take or please call the roll.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Messina.
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarsky.
Here.
Alderman E. Wesley.
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley. And Alderman Woods.
Here. Declare a quorum. Next, I'd like to get a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 13, 2018.
Second.
Questions? Corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? That passes. Next, report and recommendation. Draft ordinance and resolution authorizing special use, plan unit development, final plat of subdivision, and major site plan review for the redevelopment of the Oakwood Commerce Center located at 700 to 770 North Wooddale Road. PIN numbers 0309 to 05020, 025, 026, and 027 in the city of Wooddale. Take it away, Kelly.
Thank you. So, there was a public hearing on this matter before the CDC on February 25th. The proposal is for a combined concept preliminary and final PUD and subdivision. The project location, southwest corner of Wooddale and Middle, highlighted here in orange. The zoning is Wooddale Road subarea of the Thorndale Corridor Corporate District with the I-1 light industrial underlying zoning district. The existing conditions, there are four platted lots within the 22 acres. There are three single-story office buildings comprising 240,000 square feet that have remained largely vacant for more than eight years. There's also surface parking, a detention basin here at the south portion of the site, and then the regional detention basin here, serving the larger subdivision, and a little lake that extends onto the property of it. Here are some photographs of the existing conditions for those that may not be as familiar with it. Again, single-story office buildings, and then this is a view from the existing detention basin on the subject site looking back, looking north, basically northeast. The proposed site plan consists of two buildings. The first one is approximately 242,000 square feet. Mark Hauser with Bridge is here to discuss the tenants and also a possible tenant and a possible tenant. Building two is approximately 100,000 square feet. The construction for the property is anticipated to, well, is planned to occur simultaneously for both building shells, and then the occupancy of building two is anticipated for the summer of 2020. So it is on a pretty quick timetable for construction. In terms of the traffic flow, the area highlighted in the dark gray here along East Pond is truck traffic where it's restricted, the truck trailers, trailer, truck trailers are restricted to truck, approved truck routes. So, Wooddale Road South Middle is not a designated truck route, and therefore it would, those trucks would need to adhere to the approved truck routes.
Question for you.
Alderman Messina?
Can you talk a little bit more about that? About the approved truck routes? There was concern about traffic on Wooddale Road?
Sure. So, if there are truck trailers that are taking Wooddale Road, which are not approved routes, then it would be a police enforcement matter, much like they currently do in other areas where the truck traffic is not permitted, and so that would be enforcement issue. The property owner would have the ability to also kind of remind the tenant and work with the tenants to ensure that they make sure the trucks are traveling on approved truck routes.
Thank you.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Wooddale Road isn't certified truck route, correct?
Ms. Chrissy?
It is north of Middle, but I do not believe it's actually extends beyond that.
They, sorry.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
They do go to Irving Park Road from Wooddale to Middle to Irving Park Road.
Ms. Chrissy?
So, Irving Park Road, it's my understanding, based on the O'Hare Truck Routing Plan that was recently completed by CMAP, I believe, four months ago, maybe five or six months ago, that Irving Park Road, the recommendation was to make it a limited truck route because it currently is not. But I'd have to, I'd have to double-check that.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Correct. Being a transportation owner myself, I know that I can travel from Irving Park Road up that street. So unless they do otherwise, trucks aren't allowed to travel from Irving to Thorndale Road via Wooddale Road without any hesitation, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
In terms of passenger vehicles, there are three designated parking areas, one on the north end of the site, one in between the two buildings, and then also to the south of the site. The area between the building is actually a shared access easement that will be recorded upon completion of the project, and the parking area, parking stalls can be shared between either of the facilities. And then highlighted here in the bright green are the pedestrian routes. The reason that this is highlighted is because as part of this redevelopment, there will be sidewalks added to Pond as well as Middle, and then along Wooddale Road is a multi-use trail. DuPage County has reviewed the proposed plans and is supportive of the connection. Currently, there is a, an onsite bike trail or bike lane on Middle Drive, and in an attempt to try and connect the existing trail system, this is actually something that DuPage County has identified in their trails plan as a needed connection.
So this project, sorry.
Alderman Messina?
So this project will connect the existing bike trail that exists, exists today, but there is no connection today, so that, so this project will bring that together, and they will be adding sidewalks alongside that quarry, I call it quarry, detention basin, essentially.
Ms. Chrissy?
Yes, so the bike trail is connecting, and what the developer is going to be providing is a connection from Middle Drive south to School Street. And then along, the bikes can travel on School Street to get to then the Salt Creek Greenway Trail system. So yes, it will provide that connection to be able to make that and avoid having to drive on Wooddale Road.
Much needed. Thank you.
In terms of the architecture of the two buildings, the architecture is similar and consistent. They're using precast concrete panels with variation of depth on the facades and having a stamped brick pattern. And so, this is building one, which is the larger building, and then building two is the 100,000 square foot building. I put up the landscape plan just to make sure that everyone is aware that there is going to be a significant amount of landscaping on this property. It will be confirmed at time of permit because there are some modifications that likely will need to be made, but there are trees that, the tree replacement and all of the landscaping is going to be approved at the time of permit. But essentially, you are going to have a very highly landscaped and manicured property with two new high-class, modern industrial facilities, one of which will, at least we know, will have a corporate headquarters, which will, the company is here and can talk a little bit more about that.
Alderman Wesley? Eugene Wesley?
So my question is about the landscaping. So, the proposal for landscaping isn't here tonight, right now. You just made a comment that it's going to be modified, right? Before the permit is issued. So how do I know what his landscaping is going to be at this council?
Ms. Chrissy?
So, with the PUD, there's a number of engineering items that may affect the location of landscaping, and in our ordinance, we actually do provide some variability or flexibility in how the landscaping is installed, based on the fact that there are some site-specific restraints. And so, we're likely going to, and like any project, we may have a proposal for the landscaping, but it's not officially approved because we haven't gotten into that level of detail until the time of permitting. There are a couple of road modifications that I want to bring to your attention that are going to be occurring at the same time as the proposed development. The first one is, and as you can see with the blue, there is going to be restriped left turn lane on Wooddale Road because the access on Wooddale Road is going to be shifted south slightly. As I mentioned, DuPage County Division of Transportation has reviewed and given the conceptual approval for this. They will have to, as part of their permitting process, get a permit through DUDOT in order to make that modification. And again, they've already reviewed this and have provided approval. There are also going to be signal adjustments at the corner of Middle and Wooddale Road, and that would be to allow more green time to Middle at a right turn overlap phase and provide pedestrian signals and push buttons because we are providing a crosswalk for Middle. The other item is that there is going to be a widening of Middle Drive as indicated here with the dashed line. And so, one of the things that we have looked at is possibly increasing the taper, the taper lengths and the required storage, because we have a bit of a choke point, if you will, where, because we're creating two turn lanes, one dedicated right turn lane and one dedicated left turn lane, that it may be more advantageous for the city to look at increasing those, those distances so that we don't have as much of a choke point at that location. And so this is something where perhaps, given the existing utilities that are out there, that the city may be interested in looking at a potential cost-sharing option if it, if there is an advantage to increasing the taper lengths and the storage requirements. As part of this redevelopment, there is a final plat of subdivision, and so as part of that subdivision, there is a vacation of existing utility easements. They will be required upon permit closeout to dedicate utility easements based on where the actual utilities are located. They will also be dedicating the shared access easement between the two lots. There is also, as I pointed out, where there's new sidewalks, there's additional right-of-way that's being dedicated in order to accommodate those sidewalks. There is a dedication of a drainage easement for the stormwater detention basin that they will be relocating and expanding. And then there's also, because the regional detention basin exists on their property, they will be providing an easement, a cross-axis easement essentially, for the maintenance of that regional basin. As I mentioned, this was before the CDC on February 25th. They did recommend approval. They found that it was consistent with the UDO as well as the comprehensive plan. They did have conditions of approval that they recommended, and so I've summarized them on the two slides here. But ultimately, it's kind of finalizing some of the details that we think there may be some better options on, or making sure that we can, one of them is fire flows. For example, we need to make sure that we have a minimum fire flows. We have some sidewalk connection details where we think that we can actually improve that intersection for pedestrians. As I mentioned, the middle drive queue lengths, look at that. And then we have kind of some of the typical easements that have to be granted. They are required to, as I've mentioned, with the multi-use trail that extends beyond their property, they will have to get approval from the adjacent property owner, and so that may take some additional time. So we've built in a five-year timeframe for them to do that, and then the CDC wanted to add a bond requirement to ensure that that were, were able to be completed. So that's all I have, unless there's other questions.
Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, as far as emergency vehicle access, is there enough footage around the buildings that won't hinder any emergencies?
Ms. Chrissy?
Yes, we, as part of the review process, the Fire District did review the project. We also have auto-turn diagrams that demonstrate how the vehicles will be able to maneuver throughout the site, and because this is such a large process, we've had the city engineer review and give approval or recommend approval of the project. The Fire District has reviewed and recommended approval. The building administrator has reviewed and recommended approval. From a zoning side of things, we've reviewed and recommended approval. And so we've actually involved quite a number of staff as well as consultants to be able to review this project that's before you tonight.
Alderman Messina? We spent some time, we spent some time talking about bike trails and walking trails, and I think I, for many of us up here, I think that retention basin is very underutilized and could be a very, in my opinion, a very good spot to develop for the community. It's kind of a walking point, and so, right there, yep.
Well, I'm going to get to, there we go. Right. So we're talking about.
Exactly. So my, my ask is, as we, I guess as this progress, as this project progresses, if we can think about maybe a cost-sharing of developing that, maybe some benches, something to walk, not only your employees, I would imagine. I know, I love my employees leave the building and they go out for a little bit, take a walk, come back in, feel refreshed. Same idea, maybe a cost-sharing idea, or we can, we can think about that. Because it's very much underutilized, and if we're going to make that connection for bike trails and walking trails, I think it's just a win-win. We have library across the street. Maybe we can look at, maybe even like a rain, at their room, like a rain garden, something of that sort, right? I mean, mostly, mostly we have junior high across the street. We have learning opportunities there. We have the park district there, right? There's so many great things on where this property will be located that I can't speak for everybody, but I'd love to see maybe a cost-sharing opportunity to develop that pond area a little bit more.
And I didn't have my mic on the whole time, so sorry, people at home.
We won't make you repeat it.
No, please.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Randy, you're right on that. We already, years ago, we talked about making it with a joint purchase with the park district to puddle bikes and all that, puddle wheels and all that. So I have two questions if you don't mind.
Sure.
The one question is, at the meeting that I attended, what's the distance with the fire hydrants are changing over there too, right? That was mentioned.
Ms. Chrissy?
Right, so one of the deviations that's being requested as part of the PUD is to allow the building code to supersede the zoning regulation for the distance between the fire hydrants. And so, it would increase from the UDO requirement of 300 feet between fire hydrants to 600 feet. And so, in order to allow that, then the Fire District as well as community development has, have determined, and the engineer, have determined that they have to demonstrate that they meet the minimum fire flows. And so that's why one of those conditions was listed as that. But the, the building code permits the 600-foot distance. It's just that our UDO does not allow that exception, which is why they have to request a deviation from our code.
Okay. And another follow-up if you don't mind.
Sure.
The second building that they're proposing to build, how many, the pictures, how many dock doors are going on that building? The warehouse building that we, you had a picture up there. Was that all the dock doors? It was up there. The drone was up there.
I mean, do we, do we really have a definitive answer, being that we don't have the end-user in it? Because that could change how that's.
Well, if he's building it in, in all in one phase, I would assume that he knows how many dock doors are going over there.
You tell him it's two.
No, there's more than two dock doors on that second building.
Ms. Chrissy?
Right. What I would say is that this is a representation of sort of the maximum allowance that, that they're planning for, but the company that will be occupying this building is actually here. I'm not sure if they've gotten to that point in terms of the design, whether or not they're going to need all of those dock doors, but the developer is also here, and so I'm sure that he could probably provide more insight into that or the tenant.
Thank you. Do we want to bring up the developer and answer that, or do we want to continue and we can bring the developer up afterwards?
I'll defer to you.
Well, let's get a couple more questions. Alderman Jacob?
If we could go back to the one where it actually shows the whole property with the entrance and, yeah. So there's going to be two entrances off of East Pond Avenue too as well, correct? Or no?
Ms. Chrissy?
Yes, so those are existing entrances. They are going to be modified to allow the turning movements that are required, but they are largely going to remain in generally the same spot. They are going to be reconstructed, though.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
As far as the dock doors go, they're facing the interior and off of Wooddale, facing wheat, correct? Or is it pond?
Ms. Chrissy?
They, they are facing pond.
So they're not facing Wooddale Road like we don't.
Correct.
Not allowed, correct?
Alderman Sorrentino?
Kelly, could you go back to the detention pond there that Alderman Messina was referring to earlier? As far as making it a comfortable, enjoyable spot? The land, what, is all that land going to be theirs? Is anything of the cities there?
No. Ms. Chrissy?
No. No, sir.
It is not city-owned property, and it is not technically part of this redevelopment, so the developer will not own that property. It is actually common area for the Forest Creek subdivision, and.
There was a point to that question. It was the point of, to perhaps enhance or beautify that area if we could give some consideration to some of the sculptures for that property.
With sculptures?
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
Well, thank you, Chairman.
You're welcome. So, Ms. Chrissy?
Actually, if you don't mind, I'll actually turn it over to Mr. Cage.
Yeah.
Before we turn it over to the developer for just a moment.
Excellent.
Just very briefly, just a little background for everyone. The first meeting I had on this project was approximately four years ago. There's been a lot of work on this property, not only from the City Council through the comprehensive plan, the developer who sat in countless meetings with Ms. Chrissy, myself, the real estate brokers who've been involved in those meetings, and the prospective tenant. And I would like to say that a lot of time and a lot of effort has gone into this. We all know that site has been vacant for a number of years. This is the front door to our community, and we've spent a lot of time crafting a plan that we think that everybody will be comfortable with, with a user that everybody's comfortable with. And really, kind of going back very briefly, this all started with the City Council determining what we were going to do in the future. We knew what we didn't want. We weren't entirely sure what we did want, and this has really come together well. So I applaud everyone involved in it because this has been a long time coming. It's a prominent site, and I think we have a very good plan in front of us. So, thank you.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I, kudos to staff, and I think a lot of people don't know this, but there was a lot of interest in that site by other developers. And to have the foresight to say, you know what, wait, let's wait a little bit, maybe something bigger or better will come. Kudos. Thanks for your guidance, staff, and your knowledge and expertise to say, hold on, let's not jump at the first thing. And now we have this awesome development that's coming to town. It sounds like a great, a couple companies. So kudos to your expertise for, for helping guide us as well.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yeah, this is a forum for political basis, but I did put down on a Q and A in that we should build a track around that facility, whether or not it's co-op by the park district or the, or the industrial park in the city as part of a unity, unity track for everybody to use, to be used by everyone. So, just so you know, it, it could be everything. I mean, that whole pond could be used for everything.
Okay, well, before we move forward, I'd, I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft ordinance.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Chrissy, it looks like you had a question or wanted to.
Well, actually, if I could just ask Mr. Hauser to come up and, and kind of.
Absolutely. Would love to hear from him.
Just say a couple words.
Don't kill our motion now. Good evening. My name is Mark Hauser. I'm with Bridge Development Partners, and as Ed mentioned, we've been working with your staff for about four years now to come up with something that really makes sense for this site. We think we're there. We, actually, this is owned by UBS, if you're familiar. Our deal with UBS was that they had the option, once they knew what we were going to develop it with, they had the option to stay in the deal, own the property. We would act as developer, or they could opt out and sell us the property. So I just want to make you aware that we are going to buy the property. We're going to close on it in probably mid-April. So UBS has elected to move on, and we will be the proud owners of this site going forward. As you see, we've got the two buildings. The north building was designed for a company that approached us. It's a company that's located in Wooddale, and they were going to consolidate a couple of facilities into the north facility. They have taken quite a while to determine, you know, what their next move is. We are still very optimistic that they will select this building, but we don't have a definitive answer yet, so I can't really get into who it is, but I, I think you would be happy with, with who they are. And as I said, they're currently in Wooddale. It would be a significant office build-out, sort of a corporate feel to it. It would not be their actual corporate headquarters, but it would be a very nice facility. The south building was designed for Forward Space. We're excited to have them. They're going to bring, and I'll let the CEO and president of Forward Space, who is Jenny Niemann, I'll let her get into a little more detail about what their plans are, but they are taking a couple of other facilities outside of the area and bringing all those jobs into this facility, so we're very excited about that as well. Our overall investment in this is roughly $50 million. So it's a very significant investment on our part, but we're very excited about it. We think it's a great site. Staff has been great to work with, and we're looking forward, if we get the approval, to go forward with this. We're looking forward to start on this, really to start demolition in, in April. So we do have a timing for Forward Space. They really need to be in, in the, the spring of 2020, which sounds like that's a ways off, but it's really not. So we really need to get moving, and as part of their requirement, they really don't want any additional construction going on after they've moved in, so that's why we're going to do both buildings simultaneously. So with that, unless you have any questions, I'd like to introduce, introduce Jenny Niemann
Thanks so much for inviting me today. Our company is very excited about the opportunity to move to Wooddale. So I'll tell you a little bit about us and the plans to move and the employees that you'll be gaining into your community. So we are, Forward Space is an office furniture dealership. So if you know auto dealerships, you know that you wouldn't probably drive to Detroit and knock on Ford's door to, to get your product. Well, it's similar with the major furniture manufacturers. The line that we carry as our major line is Steelcase, and they are the, the global leader. It's a over $3 billion company headquartered in Michigan, and we are regularly one of their top 10 dealers in the country. And the way the dealership works is we are a very fun business. We're the front end, if any of you have watched HGTV, it's all about the design aspect. So any of you in your businesses might come to us and say, I have a vision to improve my business through space. I want my employees to be more innovative, or I want them, I want to attract new workers, or I need to save money, so I'm trying to compress space but still take care of them. So our interior designers would work with you and your architects, and that's the first step of the process. Sales and the interior designers will create an amazing space. And so interior designers will be sitting in the space doing CAD drawings, working with clients. And then, once those drawings are done, they actually electronically turn into an order, and those orders go to Steelcase and the 200 other manufacturers that we represent. And we curate and procure all of those products for our clients. And then it becomes a complete challenge to actually get it implemented into the buildings because you have all these different products coming in. So what the warehouse is used for is the front portion, is to deliver freight in, that that's going to get consolidated and then brought to our client sites at the exact moment that their GCs have their buildings ready to accept the products. In many cases, that product will be going actually to downtown Chicago, and so one of our key roles is to take things off larger semis and put it onto our smaller trucks through that warehouse that then can get into the loop and in underground into these little alleyways and bring that product into buildings like the Willis Tower. So what you see from an employee base is designers and salespeople, order management professionals who are doing the procurement, and then in our warehouse, we have installers, delivers, and people who are racking and putting the product into the warehouses. We service really large, well-known clients in the Chicagoland area and actually. We service really large, well-known clients in the Chicagoland area and actually globally. So, you're going to get visitors to your town who are from these big corporations who are working with us on projects. We are moving to your area because our business was built in 2014 when two dealerships that I purchased, actually, they both needed transition plans. We brought them together under a new name. And so, we have been working through our leases and our own real estate issues where we've had too many spaces. So, we have a lease coming up in Lake County, so in the Lake Forest area, and we have one coming up in Oak Brook, and our goal is to consolidate those two locations. And I have seen a lot of properties and a lot of villages and a lot of cities and a lot of decisions, and I am absolutely confident, if you'll have us, that this is the right place for us. You've been welcoming in all the visits. You have a nice balance of residential and retail and commercial and industrial that fits us well. And for our business, image is super important. When people come up to this space, we want them to envision what their future workplaces like, so I can't be buried into another industrial park somewhere, yet I do have trucking needs on the back end of my building. So, this particular spot, we just love. And while you called it detention basin, we called it a pond when we saw it. And we're really big on worker well-being and so access to biophilia, getting out and walking around those ponds. And we do sell outdoor furniture, so I'm sure I can scrape up a sample or two to put on these outdoor areas that we would love to support. So, we'll probably start with immediately 60 employees working, moving in, and as we consolidate some other locations and grow, I definitely, we're designing the space for 100 employees to be joining your community. So, hopefully you'll have us. We're very excited about it. Any questions?
Excellent. Thank you. Alderman Sizmarsky.
Yes, ma'am. You said you deal with HGTV?
No, I said if you just, if you watch HGTV, the beginning part is all about design. So, the front of our business is design.
I was going to say, one of the young ladies from this town is from HGTV.
Oh, really? Well, she could come work for us, too.
Monica McGee is one of the women from that show that's on air.
Okay, well, maybe they need to come visit and talk about like what it's like to remake an office.
Alderman Messina?
So, I'm really big about image and quality and brand, and a lot of the work we've done in our town has been around that. Now, I'm very familiar with Steelcase because out of college, I lost a lot of deals to you because I worked for a Han dealership.
Oh, okay.
So, I spent a lot of time in a place called Muscatine, Iowa.
Yes, I know it.
As you are probably very well familiar. And so, I would just tell the rest of this board that Steelcase is basically the Cadillac of office furniture. You beat me many times and you cost me a lot of money in our deals, but we knew what we were up against. And I am thrilled that you guys are here. I see some of the work you guys have done. My wife's office is actually across from you guys, and you guys are in the merchandise mart as well, so I've seen what you guys have done. I've been to that crazy trade show that's down there as well. I'm very, very excited to have you guys to town and however we can partner with you guys, please bring it forward. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for the endorsement.
Seems like you've gotten over your bitterness.
Yeah, yeah. You know, 50 million, I don't think I lost that many deals, but it'll work.
After there's no more questions, we're good? Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Absolutely, yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Welcome to Wooddale.
Next, items to be considered at future meetings. Right now, there aren't any. Is there anything anybody would like to throw on the agenda? Seeing none?
Yes.
Whoa, time is up. I already said seeing none. Go ahead. What would you, what do you got?
Do we have an update on the house or the bank next door, when that's going to come forward?
The SBT deal?
Yeah.
Okay. Staff, if you guys could...
Hi, guys. Congratulations.
SBT.
Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
To move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
Next.
Call and order, roll call. Everyone's still here, minus Roy Wesley. Need approval of minutes, meeting February 14th, 2019, Public Works.
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Form recommendation for approval of contract between the City of Wooddale and Builders Paving for the fiscal year 2020 road project in the act acceded amount of $540,928. That's my motion.
Second.
Question.
Go ahead.
Where's that company out of? Is that the Orange Crush?
Matt?
Yeah, it's not Orange Crush. I guess I would have to look at the packet. I'm sure that it's in there to see who they, what they're out of.
Since I never heard of that company and I heard that they may be tied in with the Plumbo deal.
Yeah, so we, Robinson did their due diligence and check references and agreed that they were the most, they were responsible a little better in the project.
Mayor.
Ed Metz, so, anybody listening, this, I see this project came in, what, 18% under bid?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, the actual project, we budgeted $750,000. The project amount obviously is $540,928, so it's just over $209,000 under budget.
Nice.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah, I think I want to add to that, and for those that read the packet, when we look at the next item, the combined...
Well, we'll get to that.
Well, I'm not going to, I'm just saying, combined kudos of half a million dollars under budget. So, great job, staff as well.
There's a motion.
We have a motion and a second.
And a second, roll call.
Right.
$540,928. They're out of Hillside.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next, they got approval of a contract between the City of Wooddale and Alamcon Concrete Construction Incorporated for the Stormwater Project along Dalewood and Gilbert in the not acceded amount of $1,158,837.
I'll second the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Do you amend the motion?
No. Did you make the motion?
Sorry, you said amend.
I said I'll make. Are you ready to? I'll third, okay? Let's move forward here.
All right. Questions, Mayor?
Yeah, just so everybody's aware, this is the second phase, correct, Matt? Squawk Creek project is almost close to complete, and this is the second phase of that flood project.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Alderman. This part of the project is the Gilbert Drive, the extension of the storm sewer sizes to help alleviate some of the drainage issues on that side. And plus, it's also to put in the expanded storm sewer along Dalewood, which will ultimately get tied into the lift station that'll drain the huge underground drainage system that we'll have. So, phasing-wise, I don't know what we're going to call this, but this is the part two.
Right.
Part deux.
Part deux.
And just so, since Alderman Messina stole my thunder earlier, we are $341,181 under budget on this project.
Nice.
And the extra $500,000 will be very beneficial to the capital improvements plan and our overages that will be bound to happen later on in the year. Sorry, Alderman Wesley.
Yeah, Matt, but what I was going to say is that if the residents need a refresher on this, they can go to the YouTube that the city has. They made a presentation back in, was it the first of, the 10th of January, 2019. They can go to YouTube channel and they can actually see the actual project and, you know, what's been approved and what's coming down the pipeline. Just want to mention that. Thank you.
Roy Wesley?
On the Gilbert, wasn't that, wasn't that one of the streets that was closely regrind, resurfaced, do at the same time? Reconstruct? Or is that Herman?
Mr. York?
One of them is.
The Gilbert project is solely a stormwater project at this time, or maybe some patching and stuff involved, but it's not a roads project.
Because they're...
It's not a full, it's not a full roads project.
But there are some with this flooding issue. Okay, that ain't one of them. Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarsky?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Motion carries. Items to be considered for future meetings. I have a 50-50 cost share program, March 28th. We are drainage program for non-for-profit spring and senior grass program for spring. Anything else to be added other than what's on there? Did I hear any? I make a motion for adjournment?
Second.
Motion carries. You're adjourned.
I'd like to call the Finance and Administration Committee to order. Please note that all the same people are in attendance besides Alderman Roy Wesley. And Eugene Wesley has stepped out at 8:14. We'll start with an approval of minutes dated February 28th, 2019. I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up, reports and recommendations. We'll continue on part two of the fiscal year 2020 bud, excuse me, 2020 budget. As a reminder, please speak the page number if you have a question so that those that are following in the binder can follow with you. Mayor?
Brad, can you do me a favor before we get started on the road and bridge? So, I had a resident come up to me and told me that he was told the city doesn't have any funds in the bank. We're out of money. And I told him, how can that be? I go, if you want to see the statements we can show him, tell me, do we have the $9 million in the bank? Yes or no? And, you know, please.
Excuse me. Go ahead. Director Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, the latest balance sheet report we have is from the end of February, and I don't have the exact number, but across all of the various bank accounts and investments whatnot that the city has that it could tap into for the general fund, there is a little over $9 million in all of those funds across, across the spectrum. So, it's not, it's not in one institution, but across the...
Any follow-up? Well, there's a lot of noise, so, it was nine, it was $9 million as a collective.
Yeah, he was told that it's not true. There's no funds in the bank.
Right.
That's what he was told. I'm like, whoever's telling this stuff doesn't know what he's talking about.
If I could ask a follow-up question, actually. I'm going to grant myself that. What is, GFOA, the Government Finance Officers of America, has a recommended best practice on the amount of reserves that a city should have? I know we spoke at it. Is it two months, three months? What is that amount of reserves? Go ahead, Director Wilson.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe their technical number is 15 or two months, 15% or two months.
15% or two months? Okay.
I think each month's, you know, 8.6%. So, two months is really, what, 17.2? But, so, two months is what the recommendation is.
So, I wasn't a math major, so two months, we have almost nine months, so that's about three and a half times the amount of recommended reserves that the GFOA is recommending. Essentially. Kind of, yeah? See you nodding your head? Yeah? For those watching at home, I mean, if we're going broke, we might want to let people know and sound the alarm, so I just want to make sure that people are clear that we've, we are not just meeting the minimums, we are three, almost three, over three times the minimums.
Correct, yes.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Alderman Tony Catalano?
Is that why we got the AAA rating?
The question, Director Wilson, is that why we're one of 23 communities in the state of Illinois that has got a AAA rating, bond rating? Director Wilson?
There are multiple factors that go into it, one of which is the fund balance of available funds, liquidity, things of that nature. So, that is one of the facets and one of the factors that goes into the rating process. There are, it's not the sole reason, but it is, it does go into the stew, it does go into the pot as a, as a reason, yes.
So, for those watching at home not familiar with the bond rating, AAA's, where's that kind of stack up? Is that like an A in school? Is that an A+? Is that a B, B+? Go ahead, Director Wilson.
Well, in the general bond environment, there's the US government, which is on top of everything. And then the next layer below just the US government is AAA, and then AA, single A, triple B, double B, B. Once you get to the Cs...
I know you had that resident, I had a resident say the same thing, and then somewhere that was mentioned, I think, at a conference you were at, is it, we're one of how many communities in the state of Illinois to have that? Is it 23? It is 23. Director Wilson, is that accurate?
Yeah, the, the last check, that was accurate. We're, we're working through that, confirming that. It changes every year as, you know, communities get upgraded or downgraded depending on, you know, it does change over time.
So, for Mr. Zagel watching at home and Mrs. Hunter, there's your answer. Hopefully, this has been a good start. We'll continue on unless anybody has any questions? Good? Okay. So, let's continue on. Director Wilson, let's start with the road and bridge project.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, road and bridge, obviously behind the road and bridge fund tab, also page 90 in the budget book. And this is, the road and bridge fund is the first fund in the special revenue funds. So, those are funds that are only used for, allowable to be used for a certain purpose. As one might surmise in the road and bridge fund, the eligible expenses are roads and bridges. So, you'll see the line items in there correlate to that. The, really, the only significant change to this year was that the pavement striping was taken out of contractual that was combined with another project elsewhere in the budget for some synergies. Aside from that, there's really no change to the overall structure and design of the road and bridge fund from a budgetary standpoint.
Are there any questions? Okay. Please continue. Go ahead, Alderman Peter Jacob?
Yeah, on page 91, the real estate taxes current, that's from the property owners in town, correct? The revenue?
Go ahead, Director Wilson.
Correct. So, there is a line in the tax levy for the roads and bridges, so, yes, yeah.
And just one other question. What is the replacement tax? If you could explain that.
Go ahead, Director Wilson.
So, the, so, personal property replacement tax, the PPRT, that's actually money that's remitted to the city from Addison Township as, it's a replacement tax, so it's an offset for taxes that, it's kind of hard to explain, but basically it's a tax that, I forget, it comes in as the corporate PPRT. Trying to think, the general fund is taxes that aren't otherwise categories, it's kind of a companion like to the use tax, so it comes in from the township to help us maintain the roads in the city. the roads in the city. So it's, I'll get a better definition of it because it's kind of weird. It's a, it's an, it's an odd one.
Okay, fair enough.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Is, is the bridge that goes over Irving Park Road, is that, is that, comes out here? The bike path, or no?
Director Wilson?
So the maintenance on that, that's been ongoing last year and upcoming, is actually programmed out of the CIP, out of the capital improvement program. But I mean, technically, it would be eligible to come out of here, but I think based upon the scope of that work and the amounts, we've been taking it out of the, the capital improvement program.
Well, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Because I know eventually we're going to have to do some major work on that, the path. I mean, are we responsible for that? And when, we are responsible for that path. Because I noticed there's-
Director Wilson?
Holes in there now.
So defer to Mr. York for a better answer on the path.
Director York?
Yes, thank you. The path is our jurisdiction from Brookwood, I believe, at the south, all the way to Prospect on the north. So we are responsible for the maintenance of that per our agreement when the path was initially put in through the comment right away. So yes, we are, I believe the budget for that, for capital improvement was going to be in two thousand and twenty-one to redo that path.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure I understand correctly. The path you're speaking of is one by the bridge, part of that bridge, right?
By, by the target and that.
Yes.
Then, how old is that bridge? It's not even that old, is it?
Oh, it's old.
Well, the bridge is approximately eighteen, nineteen years old, and the asphalt path is at the same age.
Okay. There it's, and, okay. Any other questions? All right, we can continue.
So there was one expanded level item in the road and bridge fund. It's for the street signs within the industrial park. So the street signs, they would be similar to the ones that were put through the residential areas of town. However, this one, as you notice in the book, is pink, red, so not recommended by the city manager. And if you read through the narrative, part of it, the reason was the potential infrastructure changes within the industrial park, depending on how it's developed. They want to put up a bunch of signs and then take them down a year or two later. So that was kind of the reasoning behind it.
Mayor, did you have a comment?
That's what I was going to say.
Alderman Art Woods?
So along that line, I've talked about this before, as we do projects or do streets, before we did all the street signs and got the new gateway signs, but left out the industrial commercial sections of town, can we, as we do these developments, put that signage in so that everything's tied together, i.e. like the development we just passed?
Director Wilson? Okay, sorry, city manager Mermis?
You can certainly do that. Of course, it's always a better deal when you buy in bulk, but certainly an option.
Well, and, and so then that brings us to the question of, of the amount and how much time it's going to take us to, to build out, you know, all these concerns that we're going to do the roads. Will they happen or will they not happen, or how long will it take for them to happen? So for twelve thousand dollars, I might ask the question, that's a small price to pay, and if we're going to change the road, we can easily pull up the sign in the post, and we're not losing the whole twelve thousand dollars. So does it not make sense to put them up and make everything in the town look the same?
Director York?
Yes, just one caveat to this project is the Hamilton Business Park, north of the inner, or three ninety and west of Wooddale Road, is under a different caveat that they have their own street name signs. So, under our agreement with them, we wouldn't be able to put signs in that area. So, just so everybody's understanding that, if we do move forward with this, there'll still be streets in town that won't have the street name signs like we do in the residential area.
Any follow-up? Mayor, please go ahead.
Man, when you say they have their own street signs, so you're telling me we can't put up our sign with the logo and their name, their street name? Is that what, is that against their rules? That sounds kind of funny.
In the agreement that we have with Hamilton Partners, it states that they have the right to place their branded street name signs, so all of their locations look the same. It's in the agreement. So, could we put our street name signs up as well? We probably could do that, but then you'd have sign overload in certain areas. So, I just want to make sure everybody's clear that there will be a large portion of the industrial park that will have different signs than everybody else.
Go ahead, Alderman Woods?
Just a follow-up. So, that may have been written years ago, and that was probably the intent, I get it, but maybe with the conversation, that mindset, and with all the things that we're doing in town, that might be a plus to them, so that conversation might turn out better than anticipated, in which case that we could move forward. So, my goal is to make everything look the same. Sometimes you can't do that right away, but I don't want to stall it and then put up the next, whatever that is, three hundred signs, one sign at a time, one every five years. That just doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you. Alderman Sorrentino?
Well, since we're on signs, I thank you for that. The, there's a couple of old wooden signs in Wooddale. Are those eventually going to come down? Like if you're going north on Addison Road, under the Vaidak, there's this wooden Wooddale sign. Are those going to be replaced with our new waveblending signs?
Sorry, city manager Mermis?
Yes, we have an inventory of all those signs. There's actually a report coming out next week with an update on the sign project. I believe that's one of the signs waiting on permitting from, I believe, DuPage County. But a lot of the wood ones that are still out there that haven't been replaced were involved with permitting outside of our jurisdiction. So we're working on getting those. We expect a number of them to go up this spring, once the weather breaks.
So that would-
Good answer.
So just to make sure we heard you correctly on this side, or maybe I didn't hear you, the ones that we've not, it's just, it's a permitting thing. Okay, great. Anybody else? Okay. So this was not recommended, but is there a motion for this?
I'm not emotional.
To fund it?
No, I make the motion that we don't fund it.
Okay, is there a second?
That's what you're looking for.
Is there a second to not fund this? Shouldn't there be an affirmative, Mayor?
Should be an affirmative.
Right. So is there a motion to fund this initiative?
I'll make a motion to fund it.
Okay.
Being that staff doesn't have to spend all the money, but at least-
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion to fund this project. We now have a second. Amanda, could you do a roll call?
Alderman Catalano.
No.
Alderman Jacob.
Yes.
Alderman Messina.
No.
Alderman Sorrentino.
No.
Alderman Sizmarzki.
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley.
No.
And Alderman Woods.
Yes.
So that fails. So we move on. Motor fuel tax. Any questions on, on this page at all? Good? Tony, Alderman Catalano, no, good. Okay, Brad, I'll, go ahead, pass it on to you unless, does anybody have any questions? Would you like to, okay. Sure, go ahead, Director Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So motor fuel tax, this is a tax that's generated from the sale of fuel. It's distributed to municipalities per capita, so you could have a hundred gas stations or no gas stations in your town. That doesn't really matter on your allocation. It's per capita, and it's set by the state. And the rules and regulations of this are set by IDOT for what it can be used for. So, in here, again, largely the same, again, from previous years. One significant change was the road repair program that had been out of here the last couple of years was moved into CIP, again, trying to get some synergies, largely through bidding process, I believe. And then the reduction in interfund transfers was due to the transfer to the CIP for a project. Over the last few years, there've been discussion about using a little bit every year, saving up, and then doing a bigger project. So with all the paperwork that's associated, it, in some regards, makes a lot of sense to do up one large project every few years instead of a number of smaller projects, just from an administration standpoint. So last year was one of the years that we did one of those, funded one of those larger projects. And then, only thing in commodities was just electric utilities, just, you know, you know, just the price of running the lights. So nothing, nothing significant, just a-
Mayor, you had a comment?
Yeah, so what Mr. Wilson's saying, because you have to fill out all this paperwork and whatnot, you have to keep, what, what was it, a few years back, we had all these sheets coming back from many years ago, we had to clean up. So that's why we accumulate some money, put it towards a big project, make the paperwork cleaner and simpler. Correct, Mr. Wilson?
Go ahead, Director Wilson?
Yes, that is correct. And just for the record, you know, the state, IDOT, they audit multiple years at a time, and it takes them, I'd just say a while, to get back to us, and then there's a back and forth process, and then some cleanup on the backend, just to tie everything out on it. So there's nothing wrong with any of the projects or anything, it's just, just the paperwork on the backend. They're, they're very particular about their paperwork at IDOT.
Right. So there's a delay from IDOT in many cases in getting us the paperwork? Is that what I'm understanding, or backlog? City manager Mermis?
Yeah, this shouldn't be unfamiliar to anybody. You guys have all been the same council for a few years now. You had mandated pretty much that, that staff do this, so the rationale to do it once was to save time really on all the paperwork and just the restrictive nature of everything, takes forever, fill out forms, whatever. So we listened, we did all one big project, so then we'll start pooling the money again and do another big project. So this is kind of direct direction from the council the past few years.
Makes sense. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So, quite as you could use it for salt purchase, what about the beet juice? Was that qualified now?
Director Wilson, or Director York? Director York?
Oh, thank you. I love talking about beet juice. And beet juice is still not approved by the Illinois Department of Transportation as a suitable thing, just as LED lights are still not. So they take a while to get to where we're at.
Okay, follow-up?
Yeah, so, so also it shows that we could use it for streetlights. So why are we not funding more streetlights throughout, not our community, if that was the case? We had the discussion about streetlights, start lighting up the streets.
We do have a line item for streetlights, but are you, what, are you telling me the decor-
No, I'm talking about streetlights. According to that, you could use city streetlight funding out here.
Go ahead, Director York, give a response?
Yeah, so things like electric that we pay for out of this pro, is it allowable purchase? So, we don't have to go through the IDOT construction format to pay for electric out of this. Whereas if we did want to purchase streetlights, I'm sure it's a viable thing that we could do, but we would have to go through all of the rigorous steps, the PPIs, all that stuff, that just takes time and resources away from the actual projects themselves.
Thank you. Any, any follow-ups? Alderman Sorrentino?
Our intent is to light up the city, so all of this paperwork's going to have to be done eventually, unless this is part of what the city manager referred to as letting this build up for a big project.
City manager Mermis?
No, it's, we have other funding mechanisms for this. What we're trying to get across is anytime you deal with IDOT, I know the council likes control, and you lose control, and you typically complain when you lose control about the project taking too long or complaining about vendors or paperwork. So what we're saying is one project where you lose control is better than ten little projects where you lose control.
A follow-up?
Yes, so with all this jibber jabber, when can we expect lights going out?
City manager Mermis?
We actually just finished some lights on Oakwood, I believe, and we've got a few more possibly in the, in the hopper, but some lights just got completed, actually, so.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Anybody else? All right, let's continue, please.
Let's move on to the next tab. How is the tourism fund? Couple of items of note. Increase in the contractual and the commodities line items are related to the dial-a-ride van. Just trying to be, recognize those costs a little bit more accurately, as some more history and the van's getting a little bit, a little more aged at this point. Decrease in other is a decrease largely in seasonal decorations that was, was an expanded level item for the seasonal decorations last year, that's not in there this year. The money for the economic development was moved out due to the video gaming money being moved out of tourism, and all of that was offset by an increase in the special events budget, which I'm sure you're all aware of, the expanded programs, as they were voted on a couple of weeks ago at the council level for the special events, the car shows, the concerts.
So I have a question for you. Should we anticipate that number to increase? I think about tourism, right? And we, we heard from the developer of that forward space and that other project about vendors coming into town. I mean, that's a reality. And so should we anticipate that there will be more vendors coming into town for businesses such as that? I mean, it's two major businesses moving in. Should that number, we hope, increase due to that development?
Director Wilson?
Sure. So the predominant funding source for the tourism fund is the hotels. So if there's an increase in hotel rents, then, then there would be. If they're just, you know, coming from down the Ike for a day and going back, probably not.
Okay. Fair enough. Alderman Eugene Wesley?
So the tourism fund pays for all the special events that we have throughout the town, am I correct?
Director Wilson?
Correct.
So, I, I mentioned this to you, and I mentioned it to Jeff, is, what is a breakdown? What was breakdown for all the events and in?
Go ahead, city manager Mermis?
Sure, I've got sounds of summer concert series that the council had already previously approved a few weeks back.
Okay.
Twenty thousand. The addition to a car show at the Prairie Fest, one thousand two hundred and fifty. The cruise night series that the council also approved, in the new downtown park area, there's three cruise nights for two thousand five hundred. The annual tree lighting, which we do every year, that's not a new event, three thousand. The trunk or treat, which was new, very successful last year, that was two thousand.
So is, is that all the events we do? So could you-
Go ahead.
There's a couple more, like we have outdoor movies that, that's budgeted for three thousand.
I, I don't want to go through them all tonight, but could you put a memo out for what the breakdown is that I asked you to before the budget time, where we could see what it actually costs?
Could, if there's not any more, could you explain some of the other ones that I'd like to hear?
Yeah, I'll, I'll name them all now, and then what I'll do is I'll put the list in the managers' report, so everybody can have a, you know, know about them. We also have a flyer that we produced a couple of months ago that lists all the special events for this, this year. So we have the sounds of summer concerts, we have the Prairie Fest, obviously, we have the car show series, the tree lighting, trunk or treat, Green Fair, Memorial Day Parade, Public Works Open House, National Night Out, any grand openings for businesses in town, just the Shape of Wooddale event, outdoor movies, Harvest Fest, and miscellaneous events. miscellaneous events. All the volunteer dinner could possibly be a part of it.
Alderman Mike Sizmarski?
Yes, City Manager Mermis and Mr. Wilson, you showed under numbers slightly lower than before, correct? Is there, do you know the reason why, or is it because nobody's working on 390 anymore? People were, you said that tourism is part of the hotel tax, correct? And I know the hotel was quite full while those gentlemen were working on the expressway and now they're not there anymore? This is minus.
Go ahead, Director Wilson?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, that's the expense side of the ledger. The revenue side of the ledger is on page 96 and hotel, the hotel taxes projected to be up a little bit against...
I was just saying, I know a lot of them stayed in the hotels, so I should draw it up.
So, it will, it is up. Okay.
Yeah.
Alderman Art Woods?
Yeah, if we could go to page 98.
Thank you for that.
I have a little interest there. Account 49055. Economic Development, we just passed a nice thing and staff's doing a great job and, you know, a lot of wonderful things going on in that account because we moved the gambling funds to the water fund, which originally was earmarked for community development, that left that account with zero. I don't know about anybody else up here, but it doesn't make any sense to me with all the things that we have going on and that the community development department's doing and the marketing and stuff, that that is zero. So, I'd like to see if we could at least, it looks like as an average, probably we spent 70,000, so we could cut back and at least get 50, 60,000 in there. Didn't we just save a half a million dollars on a couple of projects?
City Manager Mermis?
Yeah, I would note, as Alderman Woods had stated, that that zero is in there explicitly because we had a discussion a few weeks ago about moving that funding. So, I directed Director Wilson to put that at zero purposely because the council never gave us any direction on what to do with that money. They only gave direction on to take the money and move it to another fund. So, we had to zero that out, anticipating during budget time, you would provide clearer direction on what to do.
Mayor, did you have something, or Alderman Woods, a follow-up? Go ahead, Mayor.
So, in this fund, we transferred to capital projects, right? That's where we just saved the half a million dollars? Or you want to call it the general fund? Because both those line items, interfund transfers, just shrink that by 50,000 and...
City Manager Mermis?
What I will say and what I always say, and Director York also said, we saved $500,000 on these projects, but we could have $500,000 overages on other projects, so that can't be counted on.
It's always possible.
It's possible.
We also could land another big development if we put some money into that.
It's also possible. But I like to say that line, I always say that line.
Absolutely.
No, no.
Some are up.
And we'll vote on each of those, for those watching at home, we'll vote on each of those projects separately. And if it does come in higher, then we, we make a logical decision then. But as of right now, we have a pretty good streak going and to take only 50,000 of that 500,000 in savings?
If somebody wants to make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Roll call, please. Oh, sorry, before that, apologize. Director Wilson, please?
Yeah, just going to state that the transfer to the capital project, general capital projects funds this year, that 100,000, is directly related to the White Oaks project, so that's where that came from. So, certainly if you reduce that, you could theoretically, you know, tap into what was discussed earlier, you know, with the, you know, red herring that the manager said. But it, so, just, just for clarity purposes, that next year, that, that transfer theoretically won't be there unless there's some other programmatic design.
Okay. City Manager Mermis?
Yeah, also, just sorry, one other thing to add. Since those two projects were our larger projects for this year, it's unlikely that we'd have $500,000 additional expenditure. So, those were our biggest capital projects, so likely we will keep those savings.
Right.
But I still like to talk about that.
So, we'll be okay?
We should be.
You sure it's the money in the bank? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe, maybe we can go for what? Four times the recommended reserves? I don't know. I'm going to put that out there for a goal for us, why not? If three's not good enough, we'll go for four. Who else? Alderman Art Woods?
Yeah, just one last comment. Besides that, with all the development coming in that isn't even calculated in there, right? Starbucks coming in, 7-Eleven coming in, AT&T coming in, those are all sales tax generators. New Forward Space coming in, that's another one. So, again, that's why it's so imperative to keep the momentum moving in the community, the development department, and, and put the money in there, so...
Yeah, thank you.
So, we have a motion. We have another comment by Director Wilson?
I just wanted to get some clarity on the motion. I think I know what the intention is. I just want to make sure that I, that I have it correct.
Can the motioner restate his motion?
Motion was to approve 50, put $50,000 into economic, transfer 50,000.
Less.
Less.
Okay, and then put it into...
Economic development.
Yep. Specifically, that line item, yes.
That line item only.
Alderman Catalano?
Before we make that motion, what's going on with the Veterans Memorial? I mean, it's zeros all the way across. What's happening with that?
Well, that's, we'd have to tackle that as a separate line item. Catalano? Yeah, let's handle this one first, please. Any, is that City Manager Mermis related, is your comment related to this motion we have on the floor?
No.
It's not? Okay. So, we have a motion, we have a second. Amanda, can you do a roll call on that?
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
And Alderman Woods?
Yes. Okay. Let's take your comment and then I want to go back to Alderman Catalano's point, but...
It's the answer to his question, I believe. I believe he's asking about the aesthetic improvement program with the medallions. That was actually in the CIP discussions about a month ago. That was listed as an unfunded item for now.
Go ahead, Alderman Eugene Wesley?
All right. So, I, I think we really need to start looking at where we can fund that, because we have talked about that for years now. And I can't believe all the savings that we've been doing along here of projects coming under budget, that we cannot find something to finish that project off. We can't, we, we can't play this.
City Manager Mermis?
You guys can, can do as you please. You've got a menu of projects to choose from. When we spoke about this a couple of months ago, it was not identified as something we wanted to do.
Remember, guys, that was a plan and this is the budget, right? So, things come up, we assess them, and we decide what we want to do as a group. So, this is your chance to amend that, what was, those ideas, those plans. So, please, if you have a motion.
What, what was a, what was the price tag at one time to, to do the medallions on that project?
Go ahead, City Manager.
Brad's looking it up right now. I'm going to guess. Should I guess?
I don't think guess is good, do you think?
Over 100,000.
I think it was 175, maybe.
Direct, go ahead, Director.
Yes. This beet juice, I love. I want myself some veterans memorial. I remember, not just the medallions, but to do the whole thing, right around 400,000, $50,000. And then it went down from there depending on what we wanted to do. There was a package all the way from about 190,000 up to 450,000. I think originally we had two different plans.
It's 250. 250 and 250.
Is that?
That's not for the Cadillac.
May I follow up?
The Prius?
Is that, is, was that dust for the medallions?
No, no.
So, my recommendation is that I would go back and look at what it costs for the medallions, because I don't see why we can't do this piece by piece like we do projects.
So, Alderman Sizmarski whispered, Mayor, good comment, exactly that, that we should think about phasing it. I mean, jeez, I think, we were talking about it at Streetscape when I was a Streetscape member five, six years ago. Alderman Sizmarski, you want to add to that?
As a veteran, I think we owe it to the people in this town that were vets and that are passing gone, so. We, we do have a resident that offered to paint, paint them too, so if we don't have to get them painted, he will do it for us. So, I'd, I'd make the motion for 100,000 or 50, even 75,000.
So, there's a motion to make a tran, transfer less of 75,000 to that line item for the Veterans Memorial, so that we can actually complete that project? City Manager Mermis?
Yeah, it's two different things. The one in here is just for the bricks at the Veterans Memorial. It's a zero-sum game. With that one, you're talking about the Veterans Memorial aesthetic project, so we understand the direction. It has nothing to do with this line item.
So, this line item for Veterans Memorial, 49033, those are the bricks that we sell?
It's just for the brick program.
Oh, okay, okay.
They just cancel each other out, zero-sum game. But we made a note about the 100,000, so if that's the motion and that carries then, we will...
75 was his motion for the...
CIP.
So, there is a motion on the floor.
Second.
Okay. For 75,000 to complete the emblem.
Just the medallion.
The medallion, excuse me, the, the medallion project at the Veterans Memorial. Is there a second before I take questions?
There was a second.
There was a second, I'm sorry. Alderman Catalano was the second, okay. And then Alderman Woods, question?
Yeah. So, I certainly, I've talked about it even longer. And every time things get tough, that's one of the funds that we tend to rate. But that being said, I think one of the issues here is, as was pointed out already, we're, we're anywhere from 200,000 to a half a million dollars. And every time we get into this conversation, we can't seem to agree on, on what it is to do. So, to pick out the medallions, if everybody remembers, we did plaster ones, wood ones, metal ones, painted, glazed. There was the size, the location, what wall they go on, one wall's curved, the lights, how the lights go, because you've got to have lights on them, right? So, then, then we talked, then we brought flags in and, and we're off to the races. So, while I would love to get the job done, I, I think maybe we throw the 75 in there and it needs to go back to, we need to go back and, and put it in Streetscape and, and get a recommendation and come back here where we can actually finally execute one of those plans.
But, so, so we know that that 75 is not enough to do any of the options, so truly it would be a phasing approach, to your point, Alderman Woods, right? Regardless, right? So, essentially a reserve.
Yeah. It'll, it'll get the ball rolling.
Right.
But it probably won't be enough to do what we want to do, because once we bring it back here, we're going to find out what we already found out, is minimally, we want to spend some, probably realistically somewhere between the 300 to 375 range.
So, as we vote about this transfer, think about your commitment, not just for this year, but for the following years, if that is something you're willing to do, because just a one-time transfer is not going to do you much good and we're just going to have a surplus and it's just going to sit here and be nothing. So, I want to get Alderman Sizmarski's follow-up and then I'll get back to you. Go ahead.
Being the only vet up here, I would, I would desperately seek the involvement of other citizens out there. Maybe we form a committee with the city, city citizens and the, and the, and the board here on their aspiration of what they want to see there for their loved ones that they come to see. It is, it is almost like a cemetery to them. That's where they come to pray, that's where they come to mourn. Maybe we need to talk to them and we get our, get our answers from them.
Alderman Eugene Wesley?
Well, if I remember, it went to Streetscape, but we never came out of Streetscape with the recommendation for which ones to go with, I don't think. I, I don't remember, maybe we did.
Please go ahead.
All right. Let's not debate this tonight. It went to Streetscape. Alderman Woods already said, four different versions of the medallions. Then, from the medallions, we went to all the landscaping and all the other stuff, and we ended up at 300 to 400,000. So, if we want to do the medallions, we've got a motion, a second on the floor. 75,000 might not even be enough, or was it 75? It might not be enough depending on what we choose and we'll have to cross that bridge when we come to it. But we're not going to, we're definitely not going to settle this debate tonight on which kind of medallion we have.
We have a simple motion on the floor, right? We know what it entails and what it'll get the ball rolling to do, so we'll leave it at that. Any other questions regarding that motion by Alderman Sizmarski? Director Wilson, do you have any comments? You're good? Okay. Amanda, could you take a roll call, please?
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yeah.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley? And Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. We'll add that line item, or add that to that line item. Any other questions or, Director Wilson, did you have anything more on, on this? I think we were wrapped up, right, as far as presentation on that piece? Okay. I'd like to propose just a, can we attempt a five-minute break, just a five-minute break, so that we can plow through the rest of this?
Sure.
Okay, we'll do a five-minute break. 9:02. 9:02. We will start.